Thank you, thank you, thank you. Y'all love, y'all love. Me and this leg and...
That's good.
I like it. I'll get you some time. Yeah. No, I don't want to see this.
Yep, virtual.
Virtual.
So my kid. He'll be coming.
Southeastern had to close, that Temple Parish School was closed a little while ago. As if they couldn't have made that decision this morning, you know? Oh, well, that Southeastern, they'll wait and do it tomorrow. People on the road, that's when they'll be at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're bad about that.
We don't have to be in. Yeah.
No.
Thank you.
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, October 27th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Here.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Diviterio.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Public Hearing Number One, An Ordinance to Annex Three Parcels Being 11.311 Acres and 13.663 Acres, 17.55 Acres, All Owned by the City of Hammond Located in the Northeast and South Intersection of Industrial Park Road and Highway 190 East As Per Legal Description By Mark T. Chamey, Dated 9/21/2020 To Be Zoned S2 And City Council District 1 Recommended Approval By The Zoning Commission. At the request of the Administration, we have, they have asked that we remove this item and all the other ones that come below from public hearing so that they can be re-notice and sent back to the Planning and Zoning Board. So I will make a motion to remove. We do have to have public comment if anyone wants to speak on that. So is anyone here on this matter?
I'm here on this matter. Are we speaking on the matter or re-noticing it?
This is for the annexation of these three parcels. You can speak on the issue here. Yes. For all public comment, we have a three-minute time limit. State your name and address for the record.
I'm Mark Floorman, 44559 South Coburn Road. I also own the parcel at 44663 Wainwright Drive, which is the parcel ending in 113 here. I'm just to the east and just to the south of this parcel where I live with my family. I'm here not to oppose the adoption of this ordinance. I've had, after having some conversations with David Laboue over at the airport, I don't know if he's here tonight, but I'd like to thank him. He's been extremely gracious to explain to me what this project is. I don't oppose adopting this ordinance and annexing this property, nor do I oppose any plans to clear this land to the extent it's necessary for the safety of pilots looking for a clear flight path to the airport. What I'd like to say on the record is, and also gets the council to commit to when in fact you do adopt this ordinance, is request that you only cut as many trees as is in fact necessary to accomplish the safety goals of this project, not to simply clearcut the entire property. I'm asking that both as a neighbor who lives here for a reason. I moved here with my family several years ago. We were struggling in the city. I have a daughter with special needs. I cannot overstate the profound personal, spiritual, and emotional impact that living here in God's country with these trees has had on my family. And so I request as a neighbor that you only destroy as much of the habitat as is in fact necessary to accomplish the safety goals. Ecologically, environmentally, as you may know, there are formerly recognized wetlands on this property. As part of a prior contest to proposed development by the previous owner of this property before he sold it to the city, we discovered that those wetlands are not just wetlands, they're actually special and unique. Scientists from SLU came out, discovered there's biodiversity here that is unique to Hammond, maybe Tangipahoa Parish, and it would just be a tragedy to lose specifically those wetlands. Graduate students come out to my property as part of their graduate program with Dr. Schaefer at SLU to study these trees, to study the biodiversity. Also, as a wetland has obviously very important drainage issues, we've got this hurricane coming down on us, it's on everyone's mind. So again, not opposing the adoption of the ordinance or any project that's necessary for safety, but I do request that when in fact you adopt this ordinance, you add a statement that you're only going to cut as many trees and no more than is necessary to accomplish that goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, this is the property that was purchased, that we purchased across from the 19 acres on the south side of 190, right? The 19 acres with the houses, a couple houses we just purchased?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. And they're all wetlands, so we know that, can we even clear them right now? Have we done a study on that?
They're actually doing a study now, environmental phase one. We have talked to the FAA and mentioned the concern of the neighbors, and they are giving us a buffer of 20 feet. At least we're even asking for more at this time to border the residents to help you out with what you just asked about.
Right, I appreciate that and I understand that. What I would request, Mr. Mayor, is that if the FAA allows a buffer of 20 feet, and yet you can cut everything except for that buffer, that you please cut less than that as long as you can still accomplish your goals. Now, you know, well, too often you mark out the boundaries of the property, you send out the guys with a truck, and they just cut everything, which is their job. But when you plot out what's to be cut, if you could please consider cutting no more than is actually necessary to accomplish your goals.
Yes, sir. In fact, they did mark out the borders, and that's when we went back, Dave called them and asked them if we could do more, if we could cut less, and absolutely no underbrush at all to the borderline. So as much as we can leave, we will leave.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Madam President, can I make a point of order that might be remain for the rest of public comment?
Sure.
My name is Brian Trasher, consult with the firm of RJ Ellison Associates. We've been engaged by some neighbors that are concerned with the parcel listed on the agenda, which I believe the previous question currently is the motion to remove that order from the agenda and revert back to the Planning Commission. I was hoping that the council could indulge me, maybe have the city attorney speak to how that, because I'm not familiar with the rules and procedures, but why would you be having public comment on an item that you plan on removing from the agenda? Presumably, the Planning and Zoning Commission would make alterations to that, send it back here, and then all this public comment would either be moot or probably forgotten based on what would come before the council at that time, if I'm making sense.
Sure. Andre, you want to address?
Well, it's on the agenda, so the public has a right to comment. President's already signaled that the council, she intends, she's made the motion, just needs a second, but still, it's required a public comment. But you're right, all the comments will be moot if the council removes it from the agenda.
Perhaps, and again, not trying to tell you how to do your job, perhaps the council would entertain a motion to defer public comment until the items are actually going to be on the agenda and perhaps voted on and discussed at that time so that they would not be moot should they get changed or altered by the Planning Commission.
Well, I say moot, there's still comments on public record.
Understood.
The public still has a right to address the council on any item that's on the agenda.
Right, and I'm not claiming to speak for everybody in the room, I just, I know that the people I represent would probably rather speak to the council with what they have to say at the time that the council plans to take this up and perhaps move the question, if I'm making sense, so.
Then they should just stay in their seat.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
All right.
There is a motion on the table.
Yes. Any other public comment on this item, the annexation item? Sure, come forward.
Thank you. My name is Michael DeVornak. I live at 1042 Oak Hollow Drive, all right? And I'm opposed to item two here.
Sir, we're on item one. Sorry, we're still on item one.
I thought that was open.
We take public comment per item, so right now, we're talking about item one, and then in a second, we'll get to item two.
All right, I beg your pardon.
Okay, that's fine. Anyone else on item one? Anyone on YouTube? I'll close public comment. Anything from the council? I make a motion to remove.
Second.
Yeah, just call.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales. Councilman, Councilman Diviterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Number two, An Ordinance to Rezone 41.75 Acres From RS8 to IL, Requested By Roundtable Investments LLC In accordance with survey by William J. Bowden, Jr., Dated 12/9/1980, Located At 2100 Industrial Park Road, Recommended Approval With The Conditions Set For in The Agenda. Again, this is another item that the administration has requests that we remove from the agenda, and I will make the motion, but first, we'll have public comment.
Do you want to also mention that it's returning to planning and zoning?
Yeah, all of these items that would be removed would be returning to planning and zoning, which would allow comment at their meeting on November 5th. And then if they recommend it, it would come back to the council for introduction, which would be November 10th.
Either way, it comes back to the council, correct, Andre?
So I cannot make comment about?
No, you can. I just want to set forth so everybody understands how many more times this could come, so their public comment could be saved if they so choose. You're free to, but let me just finish the schedule here. So again, if this is removed, it will go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who has their meeting, I'm sorry, November 5th. Then it would come to the council for introduction, November 10th. And if it is introduced, it will be heard for public hearing, just like we're doing right now, on November 27th.
Fourth.
Fourth, excuse me, 24th, the Tuesday. All right.
Now, Coach?
Yes, sorry.
My name is Michael DeVornak. I live at 1042 Oak Hollow Drive, which is kind of on the Vineyard side of this zoning request. Couple items. It said they want to put a berm, berm. To me, a berm is a few feet of dirt, okay? I have worked in acoustics a long time, and noise-wise, that berm isn't going to do raw beans a good, okay? I know that. Second item is traffic. They say 400 employees going and coming every morning and evening. You go out industrial, out to 190, school time, and there's a backup, cars and semis. I don't know how they're going to handle that. So for those two items, I think you got to do some more planning and thinking. Most acoustic barriers you see on the highways, and you go into New Orleans and see it, they're 10 to 12 feet high, and they're not plastic or anything like that, but a thick structure. So what I see here is unacceptable, but I guess that's going to go back. Those are my major comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Pauline DeVornak, and I live at 1042 Oak Hollow Drive. I also am very concerned about this annexation because I don't think it has been thought through properly. When you drive down industrial, there is ditches that are currently being washed away very close to the road, and plus, that road has a curve in it. So my concern is that people are voting and expressing themselves at this time, and if you have not driven on it and see that you're right at the airport, you're right at major runoffs and ditches, and who is going to pay for the results of this annexation? This will come back to the city. And so to annex this property, are you annexing a problem for which you're going to have to answer down the line? And that is my concern, is that this has not been thought through. It sounds very nice to include and to be very forward-thinking, but we haven't thought this through enough. And as a resident, and the fact that I drive it all the time, this is a personal thing. And so a lot of people, council members, others, don't live back in there and don't traverse that avenue. There is no way you can have semis trying to move down industrial and not wind up in the ditch. And then who is going to pay for the insurance when this happens? These are things that have to be thought through very carefully for the results of any decisions you're making. And as our representatives and as politicians, your careers and how you are perceived in the future will be identified by projects that you have supported or not supported for this community. This is a growing community, and our community on the east side is growing, but you want to make sure you're handling it correctly. And the smallest piece of property that's not handled correctly is going to come back to bite you eventually. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Yes, thank you.
God bless you all, and thank you so much for being here.
Good evening. My name is Hugh Daschbach. I live at 19 Pin Oak Lane in Oak Knoll Estates. I live on a little small pond in the back of my home, which the water will come up all the way to the edge of the pond and into some of the yards. Eventually, they drain right back into the city's drainage systems. But we have had them within five or six inches of a couple of the homes. The creek that runs back behind Oak Knoll is the very same creek that is on this property. It runs in between the 41 acres and the 17 acres. The Medline has said that they want to use the 17 acres for some sort of a retention ponds. I'm not sure how you get the water off of the 41 acres across that creek and then onto this 17 acres without backing up that retention, I mean, that ditch that's there. It's as high as this room if you got, I've walked the property. So that's one of my concerns. My other concern is, and it may have been one, but has there been an independent hydraulic study of the drainage in the area? My biggest concern is the traffic. There is a subdivision on South Coburn Road that's going to be 325 homes. There's some houses being built on Old Covington, that's a pretty decent number of homes. And then you're talking about adding, and when they say 60 tractor trailers, they're only talking about their trucks. They're not talking about trucks delivering to a DC. If you deliver to a distribution center of 600-some thousand square feet, you do not deliver in a small UPS truck. It's generally delivered by tractor trailers. So it could be double that, so we could have 120 tractor trailers going in and out of there. And I sell for a living, and I deliver to distribution centers, and if a driver is driving, and one of your councilmen is a driver, I believe, and told me, that's true, they'll have their GPS on, and they're coming up for a 1 o'clock appointment to deliver to Medline, and they're running a little late. If on 190, there's a backup at industrial, it will give them, it'll reroute them, maybe down Coburn, maybe up Morris, or what, I guess it's Pride Drive, and then on to Vineyard. Coburn Road doesn't have any curbs, it's just big ditches on the sides, and I don't know how it can handle a whole lot of tractor-trailer traffic. So I just am asking that you and the Planning and Zoning Commission do your due diligence and conduct some water studies and conduct some traffic studies, and then if, in fact, those studies from the DOT say there's not going to be a problem, well, then you've got an argument against us, you know? But please do your due diligence. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Cynthia Laverne, and I live at 47071 Vineyard Trace. My question is, is if this agenda gets sent back to planning and zoning? That meeting is this Thursday, the 29th, is that correct, at noon?
No, November 5th.
I'm talking about the work session.
The work session.
Okay, and the public is allowed to go to that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because we were not told that on September 24th.
Somebody else was told that?
Yeah, nobody, the public wasn't made aware that they could go to the work session. Roundtable was there, but the public was not. So we are allowed to go to this?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else from YouTube? All right, I will close public comment. Now I will make a motion to remove.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Number three, An Ordinance to Approve Expanded Conditional Use Requested By Roslyn Pines, Owner and Constance Pines, Applicant To Allow Placement Of A Manufactured Home Meeting All Code Requirements On Proposed Lot C of Pine, Pine's Resubdivision Survey Located At 810 C Natchez Street, Zoned RS3, Recommended Approval With The Conditions Set For. This is another one I'll make a motion to remove. Is there any public comment? All right, anyone from YouTube? I'll close public comment. I make a motion to remove.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Number four, An Ordinance to Approve Expanded Conditional Use Requested By Bessie Hunter, Owner and Shonta Mack, Applicant To Allow Placement Of A Manufactured Home Meeting All Code Requirements Located At 504 East Michigan Street, Zoned RN2, Recommended Denial By The Zoning Commission. Anyone here on this matter? Any YouTube comments? I'll close public comment. I make a motion to remove.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Deborah McQueen, 102 Magazine Street. Would like to know are the comments that are being made tonight going to be on record at the Planning and Zoning meetings, or will it have to be repeated at that time?
They would have to be repeated, right, Andre?
Well, the comments that are made tonight will be in public record in the minutes, but they're welcome to give a bit of commentary.
Andre, could you speak into here so they can?
Yeah, so the comments that are made tonight will be a part of the minutes of this meeting, but certainly, everyone is entitled to go to meetings of planning and zoning and work session and make comments there. Additional comments are the same comments.
All right, so we had a motion to remove.
In a second.
In a second. Okay, we have Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio.
Aye.
One moment. Can you give me the address again, area?
The address is 1002 Magazine Street, Deborah McQueen.
Okay, thank you.
Now we'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Diviterio.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
I'll ask you to stand for our prayer, followed by our pledge. Ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
Let us take a moment of silence in honor of those that have lost their lives from breast cancer and those that have been survivors of it. Eternal Father, we thank you on tonight, we give you glory and honor and praise. Father God, thank you that this is the day that you've made. We shall rejoice and we shall be glad about it. Father God, we just thank you for your grace and your mercy. If there's ever a time we need you, Father God, we need you right now. We actually continue to look down upon you right now. Father God, continue to bless us with help and strength. Father God, continue to give us that grace and that mercy to endure until the end. We thank you that tonight, everything will be done decent and all and pleasing and in your sight. Ask you to continue to bless the council, continue to bless their families, continue to strengthen and guide us and keep us, and give us that wisdom from on high. Ask you to continue to bless our city administration, continue to give them that wisdom and knowledge from on high, to continue to lead our city. Father God, ask you to continue to bless our fire department, our police department, that they put their lives on the line to protect and serve us. We just thank you for it all right now. And for that, we thank you for your darling son who died upon the cross, that we too would have access to the tree of life. And we just thank you that it's by his blood we receive pardon, it's by his blood we receive purification, and it's by his blood we receive protection. We just thank you for it all on tonight, in your darling son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now for our pledge, the last call veterans and active military, under the proper salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. As for our council, I'm sorry, our reports, council members? Steve, Sam, Vaughn.
Yeah, I want to make a correction. At the last special council, the special meeting that we had, Saint Tammy denied a land clearing permit on... land clearing permit on October the 6th. And our plan is on approved rezoning of 41 acres on October the 8th to come to us for a final decision. I just want to make a correction that I made a mistake. And I want to sit here and let everybody know, when I make a mistake, I'm going to sit here and make sure that I correct my own mistake and know where I'm leading to by saying this. So that's one. Then another one, I'm worried about the stop sign. What's the update on the stop signs for Louisa West and Washington Avenue?
How many wrecks were there in the last 10 years? Three?
Okay.
There was one.
Okay. One wreck. But...
And I do understand...
No. Two weeks ago, we voted on it and we passed it. So I see as of right now, we setting up here voting on stuff, it don't matter how we vote. We voted on it. It shouldn't have been voted on, but we're not going to get it there. And another problem that I'm having, in Mooney Avenue, we've had four shootings in the last five weeks within a four-block area. Four people that got shot in my district within the last five weeks. And what can we do to slow this down or completely stop it?
Completely stopping it is not something that can just happen. We don't control what people do on a regular day-to-day basis. Generally, when we put police officers in the parks, it's because we have mass crowds of people, which we've done in Zemary Park and MLK. We've actually pulled them out because we haven't had a lot of people in the parks. We have less than a two-minute response time to any call coming in. So, you know, I mean, we're around town, we're close by. They're obviously not going to do that where police officers are standing or sitting. But do you have a police officer to sit in an area? We have an issue right now with gangs in our community. Chief, you want to come address this? Councilman Wells would like to know what we can do more about the shootings that we're having in Mooney Park and also around Orange Street Park as well.
So some of the initiatives that we're doing is working with the District Attorney's Office to identify some of the repeat offenders and having the prosecution stepped up. That's a major part of it. Most of the people that we're dealing with are people that are repeat offenders, are people that are in and out the system. So we've been working with the District Attorney's Office close in identifying that. On an immediate, we've reassigned some of our detectives, our narcotics units and street crimes units, to work in specifically in the areas of the parks. And we're going to continue to do so to try to suppress the crime in the area.
Okay. Then another issue I have, is is there any way we can stop the cars from parking in the park?
In the park?
Yes, in the park.
We generally do. The marshal generally goes out and asks them to get, the park ranger generally goes out and asks them to get out from the park. I don't know, really know where we stand with that right now, but there's no reason why. You talking about just having the car parked with people hanging out around the car in the middle of the park?
No, they park in the park, in the park. But at Zemary, I see maybe 82 signs in Zemary say no parking on the grass. So is there any way that I can get those signs in Mooney Park where they can't park on the grass? And if they park on the grass, you have a right to take them to jail?
I'll talk to them, give them a ticket if you do.
I would have to look and see what the city ordinance is that states about parking on grass in parks. I don't know if that's a jailable offense.
But we can definitely put the signs.
And we can work with it. Usually, we, like we did with Zemary, we worked with the park rangers. We got with Desiree and basically we get them to, ask them to leave the park area, leave the grass area first. Once they give the commands to them to leave, if they refuse to do so, then usually they contact us and then we step in and try to facilitate a better answer or a better solution.
So let me ask this question, Chief. You just stated that the process that you guys put together for Zemary Park, why this can't be implemented across the board for all the parks then?
Well, we actually, we implemented it for Zemary as well as MLK Park. And what it was, it was something that was part of the additional overtime funds that it took in order for us to do it. I would imagine that, yes, as a chief of police, my guys would love for y'all to increase the overtime funds to be able to cover the parks. And normally, that's something that goes through Desiree. The reason we were at the parks was due to crowds, as you know, in MLK and Zemary at some points during the year. It's, I mean, astronomical amount of people that are in the park. So we were there basically on it to assist the rangers in that types of stuff. When it comes to the actual patrolling or the suppression of crime, our patrol officers, our street crimes unit, narcotics and detectives will be the primary people to handle that. Normally, we run, and we actually went a little long this year because of the COVID and a lot of things shut down, so we had extra overtime money. So I actually increased the number of days that we stayed in the parks. Normally, we cut it out right around October and normally it starts up around April, May. So it normally goes from April or May and it goes to October. And it's for those two parks. And that was at the request of the parks person, Desiree, is how we ended up with that.
Now, I agree with Desiree on that. I was making calls about it myself.
Right.
And I appreciate that aspect of it. But, excuse me. But if there's something that we could generally put together to put across the board, that I'm kind of concerned about, you know, it hasn't happened, but I'm quite sure once this COVID stuff died out, that they'll probably be trying to get up on the grass over there in MLK as well. And make sure that we have some type of policy in place, whether if it's a ticket or, I'm not seeing anybody directing us to go to jail or anything like that. But if we're doing it in one park, let's make sure it's across the board for all of them. That way, if we run into any problems anywhere else, it already has something on the book to resolve.
Yeah. And listen, and there may be, Mr. Andrews, I'm just not familiar with the actual ordinance myself. So I don't want to get up and try to quote an ordinance that I'm just not personally familiar. My traffic guys may be familiar with it. They may know the proper action to take. I'm just not personally familiar with parking on the grass ordinance at a park. That being said, like I said, if y'all interested in allocating extra overtime money and all that to try to cover each park the same way at the next fiscal year, then I'm sure we'd be appreciative of that.
Do you have a YouTube question?
Okay.
Deborah McQueen, 1002 Magazine Street. Would like to know are there any current scheduled policing community meetings? And if there aren't, will there be police community meetings?
Is she asking y'all or me?
I guess the question's to us. Well, the question is supposed to be directed to us. Does anybody have any community and police meetings scheduled?
Yeah. When I voted him in, that's what we were supposed to do, but it never took place. So the community, it didn't turn out like that.
Well, when a community asked, but this individual asked, let's contact her.
I'm talking to the chief. When I voted the chief in, I'm one of the ones that voted him in. And him and I had talked, we had several meetings, and the whole idea, what we were supposed to do, be community friendly to the folks in the community. This is what we had talked about, playing basketball, everything we had talked about. You remember? Am I lying?
I do, Mr. Wells. And I also remember that on multiple occasions, I tried contacting you and you never called me back. I've asked you to help set up those meetings and you haven't done so. I think it's a community and police thing that has to work together. I think the council members in doing so can help us facilitate those. And if you would like to set something up where we can have a community meeting, then I'm all for it, if we're going to actually sit down and have a conversation and try to make things better.
Okay. I stopped, when you started calling me and I stopped answering your calls, I don't want nobody, I don't want nobody talking to me and I'm asking for them to be fired. So if I'm asking you to be fired, honestly, I don't expect you to call me. I wouldn't call you and I wouldn't ask you nothing.
Mr. Wells, this was way prior to that. Yeah, I have a list of all the times in which we tried to make contact and I tried to do that. It was before any of this stuff came up. And you and I did speak about doing community meetings, but can't just put that on me. You're the council member in the district and you never set anything up, never invited me to participate in anything. So, I mean, that is where we're at. But I'm more than willing to do so. And I know it's a person from your district, Mr. Andrews.
Right now, I was just about to ask, what was the address again?
1002 Magazine Street. And we also have an additional question. She wants to know, do we need a community leader to step up to plan this meeting between the police and the community? And we also have Jeff Holmes for Lynn Lane. He'd like someone to elaborate on the gang issue.
Well, let me take this question first. And what I'll do is I'll look on the calendar, get a date together, I get back with you, Chief, because this is coming from a resident in my neighborhood and we'll set a meeting for that.
Thank you.
I think there's also a night out against crime that Crime Stoppers is doing on Friday. So that should be a rather large event and a lot of different agencies, not just the Hammond Police Department, would be there. So certainly that would be a good community and then law enforcement event.
All right.
Zemary Park.
Could you have that, as, don't kill me, tell you, could you have her to give, tell you a call tomorrow and leave her number for me, please? Don't we, we have park rangers, are they at every park or how do they work as far as helping out with cars parked on the grass? I mean, they could probably notify the police if they're having an issue, I'd imagine.
They drive around parks.
Is it just one on the clock at once that just bounces around?
Generally, it is.
All right. There was a question on gang.
And there was Mr. Jeff Holmes. What was the address?
Jeff Holmes for Lynn Lane. He'd like to, someone to elaborate on the gang issue.
What I will tell you is we believe that a lot of the uptick in some of the shootings are gang-related. We believe that most of the shootings that have occurred have been specific targets in which they've shot. We did have one juvenile that was shot in the leg in the Mooney Park, which was, I guess, a straight bullet that struck that juvenile when he was playing basketball, I believe. I would tell you that things are currently under investigation and I can't elaborate too far into the investigation, but we are actively trying to make any kind of links or any kind of distinctions between who may be a gang-related person or who is not.
So you'll keep us posted, Chief, right?
As long as the investigation is going, I'll give you what basic information I can give you. You know, but the thing is this, is we have to look at crime, you know, as an all, not just if it's gang-related or not gang-related. All crime we have to look at, we have to address. And that's some of the things and some of the initiatives that we're doing. We're taking office personnel, we're putting them on the streets, and it's something that we've continued to do since I've been the chief for the past 18 months.
All right. We're going to move on. Anyone else have a council report?
Yeah, I had a question. I had a few people call me today and yesterday about the signage placement. And that's probably why we pulled, obviously, that's why we pulled a lot of these items off the agenda today. The sign was posted, wasn't it 24 by 24 size that's supposed to be posted? Who's in charge of posting that sign? And I want to clarify that. And why do we have signs that aren't the size that are required by our guidelines? Why do we even have those in our possession to have any confusion on that?
Well, those signs, 18 by 24, apparently standard in the sign business. So to get a sign a little bit bigger may cost a little more. No reason not to have them. They should have been placed 30 by 30, 24 by 24s, they were 24 by 18s. Planning and zoning is responsible, but ultimately, it is me that's responsible. So we had them get every sign in that building, out of the building that was that size. They have put signs out, I believe, already to re-sign those locations, 24 by 24. And we're starting a process over. I think Kirk Jackson had mentioned it early on and took notice of it. And we're just going back and redirecting the process again. Now, we're going to go through every process a second time. So those that feel like they may have not had enough time or enough say in this matter for the rezoning of this piece of property, now we'll be having a second meeting. So just trying to do the process right. And as Devon said, when you make a mistake, you owe it to it.
I didn't know if it changed over time or has always been that same size and if we always put the wrong signs outside, or if that's just something that's happened recently? I mean, has that code ever changed or has it always been the same size? I'm just trying to, you know.
I think the code was the same. I don't know if it was there before. Process for a while has been that size sign. So no longer is it that size, 24 by 24. So the only thing we have in the building.
So I got another question. So how far we going to go back on the signs, since the signs were the wrong size?
If someone complains about it.
Andre, would you answer that?
Yeah. So if someone believes the council took an action that was wrong, they've got to file a lawsuit. So on all those rezonings that have happened in prior years, if people didn't file a lawsuit, they lose the right to challenge it. So that's why we pulled all the ones that are currently pending before approval.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor, any thoughts?
Well, as we know, we have another storm coming. It looks like this one's coming directly to us. Most people have prepared, maybe some still have some supplies from preparing prior to. We have sandbags ready and prepared. No one's really, we had one call today. If anyone needs sandbagging, let us know. Should be a fast-moving storm, but yet, from what they're saying, one to three-foot tide change in Lake Mariposa. So I'm not really sure how that will affect it, but I'm sure there'll be some tree limbs down, possibly trees and some strong winds. So please be prepared, get out and get whatever supplies you may need because you may be stuck in your home for a while before you can get out and go to the store, grocery store, what have you. Also, Halloween's coming up, Saturday 31st, 5:30 to 8:30. Be cautious of all children, if there are people, there may be many that aren't participating, but I'm sure there will be many that will be participating. As we know, young kids don't want to miss out, so maybe there'll be private parties or what have you. But Halloween is this Saturday, so please be cautious for all the young ones and the families out enjoying it.
Very good. Now for our minutes of October 13th, 2020, need a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept. Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
New business number one, a resolution to request for the police department to be required to wear body cameras at all time by law. Brandy Jones.
Hello, I'm Brandy Jones, 310 Mooney Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401. Thanks. First, I want to say thank you for putting this on the agenda. And I want to get started with our first concern. The first question that the 700 people that signed the petition was, was that they want the police to be required by law to wear body cameras. That's the first thing.
Do you want to take them in order or you want to set them?
No, in order.
Okay. Okay. To that, I had someone pull the general order for the Hammond Police Department. I have a copy for you. This is the policy and the requirements regarding body cameras. So that, that is for you. And I, all the council members have one as well.
Okay. Okay. So this is the job mandate, correct?
I'm sorry?
This is the job mandate. This is what the Hammond Police Department, their requirements are?
Yes. So I would have to defer to Andre on more substantive matters with this order.
Yes, ma'am. So this is a police department general order that's a policy of the department, and it requires all members who are issued body worn video cameras to wear and use the camera while on duty or detail.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure with everything on here, but we did know that prior that they do have that. But the concern is, is that it's not on all the time. They can cut them off. And if they do, the body system is the thing that the community is concerned about. So they want to go a step ahead. So if they do get them, if they do cut them off, if they do mess with the feed, that there is some type of law where they have to, where, well, you know, I'm not sure how they would set the law up, but that it'd be a requirement by law to where to go a step ahead.
It seems like, listen, who even manages, who even manages it if they don't wear the body, if they don't turn it on or not, like, who enforce any consequences or, or any, any, you know, disciplinarian, because it seemed like the last thing we had, it just seemed like it really wasn't much to it, they really didn't have much discipline, much, it didn't have really anybody enforcing it, you know, excuses about the way the, the camera's designed and, and this and that, so I mean, you know, who, is it just the, the chief, or?
The department, the, the department.
Because what the chief was stating the last time was that they, there was no sure way of knowing if they did cut it off or if they didn't, if it was a mistake on the camera and things like that, so they had these same protocols then, but they were stating that there was no way of knowing, so that kind of furthers that we need some type of system in play where if it does happen, then there's, there's a consequence, because we as citizens, if we break any law, there's a consequence.
There have been officers suspended for not wearing or activating, in certain situations, their body cameras, that has happened in the past.
In Hammond?
Yes, and during my time as city attorney, there, there have been some officers who were disciplined for not using their body cameras, and their car cameras.
So is it, okay.
Did you say that the new system we have is gonna be a lot more?
Yeah, so first off, I want to say, we appreciate y'all doing the petition, because I think that made a help for us to be able to get the more reliable camera system, it wasn't necessarily excuses, it was true problems we were having with our camera system, and with the new systems that we get, or we're getting, and should be in place, and it'll be in place hopefully by December fifteenth is the, is the set goal to come in, these new camera systems, they have a lot of safety keeps, it has a lot of keeps to where things will be automatically activated with the officers, it's just one single set, so I think when the council approved the, the new camera systems, a lot of the concerns that y'all have are gonna be taken care of as well as with our administration, some of the things that we're actually looking at is putting into the policy is mandatory checks by supervisors with logs and notes, and Captain Monaster and myself have, have been talking about and working on it to make sure that these, there's accountability with those things, so first off, the new cameras, I think is gonna make a big difference, second off, is coming up with a, a way to hold the officers accountable as far as the checks on a daily basis or however many bases, to make sure that they're actually being recorded and they actually being turned on properly.
And are the cameras connected to the cars, when the lights go on, the camera goes?
Eventually, everything will be attached to the cars, but we're gonna have to transition into the, the same exact type of camera system with the body camera system, the one thing it will be attached to, and we actually just placed the order with Bluetooth batteries for tasers, so what'll happen is, as soon as they activate a taser, automatically activates their body camera, the other good thing about these camera systems, if you're an individual officer and you're on scene and you don't have yours on, if I come up and I turn my camera on, it automatically activates yours, so this is actually something else that's a better keep, if you get within a certain distance, it automatically activates, the other thing it does is it goes back, I believe it's
Two minutes, I believe I said two minutes.
Two minutes, I think you can, it's either two to three, we talking with them about how far exactly, but it's definitely at least two, if it can go back, we're gonna try to set it back as far as we can, to where if an officer forgets to activate it initially, then he activates it, it'll actually catch the two minutes prior.
So with this general order, perhaps with the new camera and the new system, there is a, some things need to be updated, I mean, I noticed one thing is that the lieutenant would upload the video, so we know now that that's gonna be automatic, so it's
They've already started that, they've already started that policy revision.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so, again, the main thing that the community was, had the concern for, and the reason that they signed the petition was because they wanted it to be a requirement by law, I understand this, but based on the past and it not being, I feel that it would be a good thing for it to have that system in play.
So, the law in the city is an ordinance, and Andre, can you speak to anything regarding the difference?
So the way the, the policy is, this policy is of the department, and it's approved by the mayor, and it could be changed by the mayor, the council wants to enact an ordinance that could not be changed by the mayor, you can do that, you can create a policy that deals with this, I, I would, I would think that you should consult with the chief, because you don't want to get too deep into law enforcement procedures or protocols, but the council could pass an ordinance that has some semblance of a requirement for the rules on the use of body cams, but you really should consult with the chief before you adopt that.
So, Brandon, this is what I suggest, why don't we table this here matter, and they give you a chance to go over this here, by you just not receiving it, why don't we table this here matter, I guess until the next council meeting, and then we'll have more information?
Okay.
Because like the questions you asking, and God knows, I don't want to run through this, and we run through this here, we just got these body cam.
Wait, didn't he say that the body cameras were going to make it in September fifteen, or what's?
December.
December fifteen, I was like, wait, wait, wait.
They have, the company comes in and does departmental trainings and make sure that we hold the officers accountable and say, hey, they were trained the proper way in using these cameras, their setup is gonna be, I think it's December seventh, is their date, and we're hoping that right after they come in and do that, that we can start putting them out, and it will probably take us a couple days with shifts and all that, so the, the goal is December fifteen.
December fifteenth, thank you.
Okay, well, so would that be okay with you, Brandon?
That's fine.
If we table this here, and then you can come back, and we'll have more information, and see how we can do something about making it a law for them to have a body cameras on, if they cut them off, you know, the games that everybody plays, so why, so what I need to do?
We have, we have to have public comment on this, too.
Okay, okay.
Another thing to add to, to what Councilman Wells is saying, if, once you review this, because this is, I just got this as well, if you have suggestions, or if you, if this is not meeting your requirement, maybe you can help us, because we're creating law, but, you know, we don't really write it without, you know, some assistance from people, so if you have a better idea of what you're looking for, then that would probably be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, public comment, you too?
Yes, three comments, two from one constituent and one from another, they're between one zero zero two magazine, she says that she thinks the chief should go on record saying that ultimately the responsibility should be his and his chain of command relative to making sure the officers wear the body cameras, she also says that she's read about the new vendor, and they're supposed to be, there should be a representative that has a backup log that will be able to be recalled when necessary and when the cameras are activated.
Yes, that, right, we, we heard about the, those features regarding the backup log, everything is stored in the cloud, so it, it can't be edited or removed at all.
Okay, Jay Holmes, for Lynn Lane, also says, how easy, how easy is it to review the videos, and what about access?
So, I believe we spoke about that when we heard about the, the cameras, that, how easy it is to review, it, yeah?
Public access.
Oh, public access, I can't answer that question, Lacy?
Marcus is here.
You make a public records request?
It depends, it depends on what the circumstance is, but they could be in response to a public records request, it depends on if there's a criminal proceeding still pending, we typically don't release those videos while the criminal proceeding's still pending, but, but folks can make a public records request for videos, which they may get or may not, depending upon the specific request.
Okay, any other public comments or questions? Okay, I'll close public comment, and I make a motion to, oh yeah?
We have a motion, we have a second to table.
Right.
Make a motion? Yeah, make a motion to table this.
Second.
It was Councilman Andrews?
Yes.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion table.
Number two, a resolution to purchase ten police Tahos from Jerry Lane Chevrolet for three hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty cents under state contract, Councilman Leon.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this, bring this back up, we've, we've had quite a bit of discussion about it in the past, it's my understanding that Councilman Wells and whoever else was looking for additional information, received that information, it's my understanding, and questions have been, and questions have been answered, I, I do want to just make the point, and I understand why there was, there was some questions about purchasing these, purchasing these vehicles, what I want to say is that I think we need to move forward with the purchase of the vehicles now, we're almost at mid-year, if, if we, if, if people see, or if the other council, councilmen see that there's some issues in policy, some issues in procedure, that we need to change this annual buying of ten vehicles, then let's discuss that through this year, and when we move into the new budget year, have changes made so that we don't do that, but instead of just losing a whole year while we're trying to determine whether policy and procedure is valid, not valid, if the cars are needed, not needed, the citizens of Hammond have, have voted on the millage, that's where the money's coming from, I think it's just time that we need to move forward, and if we need to, if we need to relook or continue to look, we continue to do so, and we address it at the next budget year, and that's my position on that, I think Jana might have had some updates on the purchasing, is she here?
Yeah, I think, before you go to Jana, let me finish.
Okay.
Okay, I asked for the, a public request for the records, I haven't finished reviewing the records, so don't you sit here, you can't talk for me, and not one time you asked me, or Councilman Wells, what did you find on the records, you know, you didn't ask me no questions, so don't sit here and say, I got what I wanted, yeah, I got what I wanted, and yet I have a report to make, and I haven't got a chance to make the report, because I didn't see, I didn't receive all the records, just like yesterday.
I, I understand that, what my, my point that I was trying to make was that it's my position that you continue to review that, and you continue to review any additional reports, or anybody else that wants additional information, and then we can determine, moving forward next year, what needs to be done or not need to be done, but in the interim, let's get this done this year and make adjustments next year, that's my only point.
Okay, I heard your point, once again, now just like you made this here point, I'm gonna make a point, and when I make a point, I want you to feel the same way, and treat me with the same respect that I'm gonna give you, so whatever you want me to vote on, and how you want me to vote, I want you to tell me, I'm gonna do that for you tonight.
Okay.
You ready for me to vote on?
Yeah, I'm ready for a vote, sure.
This item, we're not ready to vote on.
We got, we
Information.
Yeah.
Good evening, these Tahos are now available on state contract, Jerry Lane Chevrolet is the vendor that awarded, was awarded the contract, if we are able to order tonight, they should be in around January, the earliest, we don't know exactly the price of what the equipment will cost in the future, because they're just now coming out with the equipment, this price will be just for Tahos, we will do equipment later on, some will be purchased off of state contract and some will be bid out.
Thank you, Jana.
I had asked just for information on the millage, this is not, as to the, the millage, currently, I understand there's six hundred, I'm sorry, four hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars in it, that does not include the four hundred forty-five thousand that would come in, in February for the current fiscal year, so there's obviously more than enough money that was voted on by the people for these vehicles, to cover these, and then have plenty of other, any other funds in the, in the millage fund to pay for upgrades and, and whatever else is needed under, under what was required under that vote, so just wanted to point that out, any other council issues, or before we get to public comment?
Well, I, I, I agree with, with keeping things in flow and moving forward, the only thing that I asked, moving forward, that we put in place, some kind of guideline that they have in place for accidents and things of that nature, when I was working at the sheriff department, every year you had to take a driving course, even though I didn't drive a vehicle, from the sheriff department, it was still up under my training for that year, but it was removed because I didn't drive a vehicle, I, I think that that would be something that, that's good to have on record, it'd be good to have for the citizen insurance as well, showing that these guys are going, and females as well are going through these courses and classes, to have, to have on record, and I, I, I think that somewhere along the way, we just lost it in that, but that's the general thing, or some of the things that we were requesting and what we, what we're looking at, because, you know, we're spending money on vehicles, you know, going to the ditch, what have you, or being flipped over, things that are happening in, in chases, and I, I'll say this, a couple of weeks ago, I was happening on my way going back into my neighborhood, and I passed down the street and a guy was in the ditch, and I come back around, I don't know who the guy was, but I rolled the window down and I asked him, was he okay, and, you know, he told me, I guess in a joking manner, that he was trying to parallel park, so I just rolled up the window, took my picture, and went on home, so, and I guess he probably didn't know who he was talking to, I just put it like that, and I didn't try to make no big stink about it, because, you know, things can happen, but, you know, we just, I just, me, I can't speak for nobody else, I just want to make sure that I'm being a good steward of what's being presented in, in front of me, and I appreciate it, Steve, I understand your, your argument, where you're coming from, and I've received calls from other constituents, and I even had officers standing right back there in the back, inviting me out for a cup of coffee to talk about some things, and, and, and we, we, I, I went, we had a conversation, and we left on good terms, so that's just how, where I'm staying, so, you know, I know I talked with Captain Monaster yesterday, we had a nice conversation about some things, so, hey, I know some things are probably gonna be in the work, and work some of this, I just want to see it happen.
Well, I just, I wanted to say one thing real quick, and that was just what Steve, Council Steve made a comment earlier about, you know, let's go and get it done, and, and get the cars and deal with it later, I mean, to me, proper way you do things, you, you get something addressed, put something fixed, review what you need to get reviewed, and, and then make a correction or whatnot, and then, and then move forward with the purchases and expenses you take, just like in business, if you have, you have some problems you gotta work out, or clarify, or review, you know, just go and buy it before you make the changes or corrections, so I just want to say my opinion on that, I think sometimes you may want to take your time and get everything confirmed, clarified, and if there is any issues that need to be changed before you make another purchase of city funds, it just because it's, the, the citizens voted on it, the money's there, it still needs to be spent correctly, so how to say that, also want to say, I appreciate Captain Angelo calling me this week, going over some details, explaining some things, we had a nice conversation, communication was great, I appreciate you taking the time and doing that, you explained some things, and, you know, I was excited to hear that, you know, you were looking at getting something in place with the driving classes, and, and having it maybe more so on a yearly basis and everything, and I'm sure it may, I'm not for sure on this, but it probably will help the insurance if, if you report it every single year of, of officers going, I don't know how expensive that is to hold these classes, that's another good question to ask.
Well, the plan is to actually implement defensive driving in our retrainers, so everyone goes through a yearly retrainer, and we feel like that may be the best way we can get everybody through the class, rather than just picking and choosing as they get in crashes and then maybe overlooking someone, we, we have, it's a six-hour course, it probably actually takes about four hours to teach, we can do it at the training center, it's not very costly, it requires a little test, a little certificate, and I, actually, it probably gives maybe a little bit of a discount somewhere, either from a personal insurance standpoint, or from the cities, I'm not sure about that, it'd be up in the city, but that's the plan, and, and I've already spoken with the training officer, I've spoken to the chief, we've agreed that that's something we need to do, we starting to put our plan together for our retrainers, we generally do that somewhere around the end of November and December, for, probably February will be the first retrainer, and that's the plan, you know, we want to fix this thing, just like y'all want it fixed, getting back to the guy, making his comments about parallel parking, apparently he didn't do a very good job at that, you know, and so, most of our crashes, I looked into them, a lot of them are kind of minor things, we back in the stuff, we run in the ditches, it's night shift, it's, it's shift work, I mean, we, we do that, we even back into one another, you know, major crashes, one is too many, but we don't have a whole, whole lot of major crashes, but we do, we do tear up a few things every once in a while, but we want to fix it, and, look, we take these cars, these, these cars are, are officers, so if we tear them up, we, we get something old and, just to get around, you know, so we don't intensely want to tear them up, I don't think.
I'd like to say so, Captain, I did receive a phone call from you also, and I want to appreciate it, but Kiff got coffee, I like a bottle of water.
No, 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 the other officer bought a coffee.
Say it.
I guess we're gonna have to buy you breakfast.
All right, well, no, I do have a question, though, this for the city, okay, when a car is totaled out, from the insurance company, where does the money go?
Goes back into the millage.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, you have something else?
I was gonna just say, I, you know, don't think that I want this just to, to go away, we need to review policy and procedure on this, and I think we've got a good start on that, and, and we need to make sure, all of us need to make sure, that at the end of the day, And, and we need to make sure, all of us need to make sure that at the end of the day, we come up with both a policy and procedure that we can all agree upon. And part of that is also the number of cars that we need to look at for the following year. So this just doesn't go away if, if, if we should vote for your cars tonight. This doesn't go away. My concern is that, as Jana just stated, it'll be January before we get them. So, we may, we wait much longer on this. You might as well pass this year anyway. And then that's just gonna cause, I think it's gonna cause problems moving down the road because then we may have to double up and money may or may not be there, yada, yada, yada. So anyway, that's, that's just my, that's, that's my point is, it doesn't go away. I want to see these policies and procedures reviewed and I want to see whatever changes need to be made, just like the rest of us do, just like the, the citizens want to see. And I'm glad you're working on them.
Well, one, one of the things that we have to do as well is, we have, after we wait for the cars to get approved, once that approved, they're approved, then we, we put out the information on the equipment because we don't know what type of vehicle's gonna be approved. So we can't pre-plan that.
And usually the equipment that comes through is pretty standard equipment. It's what goes in, automatically goes into a patrol unit, what automatically goes into an admin unit, and what automatically go into an investigative unit.
And I did like how, you know, Captain Angelo, you did check in Explorers for Explorers and the prices. I mean, you know, I, you know, I mean, if you could get, I look at it, you get 11 Explorers for the same price, that's one extra brand-new unit you can have out there. And so that's kind of how I look at things.
The Explorers actually came in a little higher. Probably 10, 11,000 total. When you, when you bid these cars out, you, you get the basic car and then you select what equipment you're gonna put in it. And Ford and Chevy has some difference in prices on that equipment.
I think Jana helped you with that, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I think there was lots of discussion about that. As of the email that was sent on September 24th, outlined both remark, our supervisor, the maintenance history of those vehicles and that they just don't last and they cause a lot more expense and heartache than help to the city. And so between that and between comparing the state contract prices and, and knowing the officers who have ridden in those different units, the Tahos are the preferred unit. The last time that the council provided and approved police vehicles was April 9th of 2019. So it's been quite some time since we've approved vehicles. And if there were differences, you know, of how to talk about policy and, and whatnot, you know, I mean, we're talking about, I don't know, offhand, but half of the accidents almost were sometimes caused by other drivers, not even our police. And so it's, you know, given the amount of hours that are on the road and the training that they do go through and the situations that they do go through, it's, you know, it's impressive, actually. And I think to, to hold off on, because this isn't a, the cars we would buy, we would be buying don't necessarily go to the officers that have had the accidents. So it's almost like we're punishing officers who have been good drivers by not...
Lacy, I don't think anybody's trying to punish any officers. They were just trying to go over policy and about having a driver's classes, them to go to driver's class. Nobody's trying to punish any officers over here. Nobody.
Anybody else have any...
Is there any other? Oh, Captain, since you're up here, and I don't think I want to see you up here no more this year. How many cars you actually need right now?
Ten.
That's all you need? So you sure you don't need no more?
No, we, ten, ten would do us for now.
Okay.
Plus, I don't think we have the money to exceed that.
Not at the moment, no.
Yeah.
We did miss the cars last year because of COVID. But the ten cars now is gonna help provide with all the new hires that we've had to, that we've used to backfill our ranks. It's the first time in many, many years that we're actually fully staffed. And with that comes, we need to provide the equipment. I think there's no question, we need, we need cars and we need cars to be able to put these officers in when we hire them to do their patrolling. But I do agree, there are things that we can reflect upon and look on as far as the training goes. Not only is the class that Captain Monaster, I've just spoke with all y'all about, you have the class that we can do in the retrainer, but there's also a defensive driving class that we can do even more so if somebody is involved in a wreck. That's, you know, maybe over a minor wreck or something. If it's a major wreck, we can definitely put them through extra classes through, through one of our departmental instructors.
I, I was just gonna ask her if there are any other questions as far as the, like the vehicles, kind of threw some things together. We do have some units that are up to 12 years old, like Crown Vix and some of the Durangos. It, it is the nature of the beast. It is a police patrol vehicle. I'm sure y'all looked into your paperwork or whatever, but they don't really label them as a Tahoe or an Explorer or the Charger. It's, it's always a PPV, police patrol vehicle, SUV or the Ford, the Interceptor. They, they get used and abused. I mean, it is the job of the vehicle. It's, it's not your everyday get, vehicle to go get groceries and such. I mean, just example, brakes, brake pads, civilian vehicle, 50,000, 60,000, maybe more, maybe less. In 10,000 miles, I have a set of brake pads. That, that should show you severe, you know, usage of the vehicle. But like I said, that's the, it is what it is. It's, it's the tool for the job.
Thank you.
So, their life expectancy is shorter.
I guess we're open up to public comment now.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, YouTube comment.
Jeff Holmes, for Lynn Lane. Would like to also pose a question to the mayor. What is the relationship you have with Jerry Lane dealership?
I don't know the individual.
These are, these are bid on, or state contract, right?
Yeah, yes.
The second question is to Councilman Leon. It's basically a statement. He's requesting that it be reviewed as long as possible, as long as the public wants. The money is already set aside, so he requests that to be tabled.
Is that it?
Cindy Gentry, 50 Pine Square. Has there been an inordinate amount of vehicle wrecks of the Hammond Police that would stop them from buying vehicles on a state contract for an excellent price?
Jana, if you wreck too many vehicles, does it prevent you from getting state contract? I think that's how I understood the question.
Absolutely.
There's no penalty for...
No, that's no questions asked. But I do want to go and say, when they ask the mayor about if he has a relationship with Jerry Lane, the mayor has absolutely no decision on who wins our bids and the state contract, the state bids out their own contracts. And when we do actually bid out something, we go with the lowest bid. The mayor can't come in and say, "We want to go with the highest bidder or we, I want you to use this." It absolutely never does happen.
Thank you for clarifying that.
One additional question now. Michael Lindsay, 1111 F M D Way. His comment is to let's give the police the cars that they need.
Okay. Beth?
Sorry. Sergeant Daggett's here with the Hammond Police Department. I met with Councilman Andrews a couple of weeks ago. I, I just kind of felt the need to elaborate on the car that you saw in the ditch that day. That happened to be on my shift. It was a young man. I responded to a disturbance, a domestic disturbance. We got out with a young man who had a gun and began to chase him through the neighborhood, through the canals. My young officer who put his car in the ditch was actually responding to that. His lieutenant arrived. He evaded another car. He was running with his license sirens on, evaded another car to prevent an accident and ended up in the ditch with no damage. The lieutenant told him quickly, "Take his car to help us." And then the lieutenant waited for the tow truck. But I will say, that officer was going to a scene with an armed felon that we were chasing that was in the, the neighborhood. And I just want to reiterate something that I spoke to Councilman Andrews about. Our officers are in some cars that are, that are pretty aged, and I think we beat that to death, but I want to personalize it a little bit. One particular weekend, I had several officers that worked for me. Their cars were having to be jumped off and stayed on because the batteries were sold. One officer's car, her light bar was malfunctioning. We had to duct tape it up. These vehicles are billboards for the city. They represent us, such as a department, they represent you guys as the city. And as a leader in the department, as leaders in this department, as leaders of the city, we owe it to our officers, our young officers, to get them the right equipment, new equipment to do their job, to respond to the record number of shootings we've been dealing with so they can get there quick and handle it. And I think that the longer we let this go, the more it's gonna persist. And the only people that are suffering by this is the community and the young officers. These guys aren't getting brand-new cars. I'm not getting the brand-new car. It's going down to the guys who are actually doing the work, and I think that should be considered. Like you said, the games we play, I think we need to stop playing the games and get to the work. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I gotta come in. Tell Michael Lindsay, stop calling my phone so much about these police cars.
One additional question. Brent Ritter, 19254, Country Club Lane. He would like to urge the council to vote yes on this matter. The Hammond Police Department, police officers deserve the plentiful vehicles to respond to us, the citizens.
Any other public comment on this? Any other, anyone else on YouTube?
No, ma'am.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Close public comment and motion. Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution, one, accepting a $7,875 grant from the Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership to purchase new and replacement body armor for Hammond Police Department, police officers. Two, approving a $7,875 cash match from the Hammond Police Department. And three, authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents. Charles.
This is a follow-up to an application that the council forwarded back in June. We were fortunate to be awarded exactly what we requested. So, we're here tonight to ask you to allow us to accept the contract. As Councilwoman Gonzalez read, there is a match requirement. This typically comes from the uniform supply item in the police department's budget. But I leave that to the chief to decide what item he wants to pull that from. It will come from the PD. That's it. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Council members, any questions or comments on this? Public comment? Anyone here on this matter? Anyone on YouTube?
No, ma'am.
All right. I'll close public comment. Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution supporting the submission of a $17,088.15 grant, application to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for lifesaving equipment, mechanical chest compression devices for the Hammond Fire Department. Charles.
So, the, the amount of this grant is a bit odd. This is a, a foundation that requires an actual quote. We submit the quote with our application and if we're, we're receiving funding, we're gonna receive funding in the amount of that quote. These mechanical compression devices, they're basically automatic CPR devices so that if a person has a heart attack, instead of firefighters or other first responders having to work on them physically, they can set up this machine and it will do the work for them. My understanding is we have one. It has been used in lifesaving circumstances in the past. Whenever that device is used, it goes out of service while it's sanitized. So they want to have a second device which will expand that capability. And should be one being sanitized, you'll have another one out there that can be used. There's no match requirement on this one.
Very good. Anyone, questions or comments by the council? Anyone here on this matter? Public comment?
No, ma'am.
YouTube, all right. I'll close public comment. Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Final adoption and ordinance, number one, final adoption and ordinance to annex three parcels being 11.311 acres and 13.663 acres, 17.55 acres, all owned by the City of Hammond, located in northeast and south intersections of Industrial Park and Highway 190 East, as per legal descriptions of Mark T. Chamey, dated 9/21/2020, to be zoned S2 in City Council, District 1. I'm gonna make a motion to remove this item. If there's anyone who has public comment, I do have to allow it. I'll close public comment. Motion to remove.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.